This is Wednesday, September 3rd. It's the Athens City Planning Commission. We meet at noon and it is 12 o'clock noon. Looking to either side, we do have a quorum. We have three members that are signed in and we've got the mayor walking in, so there's four. We have a fifth member that we need to get sworn in at some point. And I don't know if we can do it here at this meeting or not, but I'd like to get that done so that she can fully participate at some point. But at any rate, we do have a quorum. And so, did you hear? I was wondering, can we, Ms. Rapp, can, Rapp Lee, can we swear her in at this meeting?
I can.
Why don't we go ahead and do that? Then she can participate, then. Perfect.
I can. I think I remember enough of the...
Okay.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ali Rappley.
I, Ali Rappley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially...
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially...
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of an Athens City Planning Commissioner.
Of an Athens City Planning Commissioner.
During the continuous of my said duties.
During the continuous of my said duties.
So, we do have a full body here today. All five members are present. The first, well, let me do this first. Anybody who would plan to speak at this meeting, I'd ask that you raise your right hand. And I'm going to ask you that everything you tell us at this meeting will be accurate and correct to the best of your knowledge. So, anybody who would like to speak, do you basically commit to only providing information that is true to the best of your knowledge? And if you do, say "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Okay. The first item on the agenda is the disposition of the August 20th meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? I'm assuming they have. If there are no corrections, or comments, or changes that need to be made, I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes as presented.
I will so move.
The move by the mayor, and is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Stone. So, all those in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Aye, accepting them?
I'll abstain, because I wasn't there.
Okay. And Ali was not a member. Can she vote yes, or does she need to abstain? Does anybody?
She was here, too, sir.
She was here, okay. Okay. So then, there were no opposition? Okay, so they, minutes passed, four votes to none with one abstention. Okay, we have no cases today. Today's an opportunity for an update on the work that's been going on with regard to our overlay zoning area, which is the Stimson Avenue area. So, we have a presentation by the American Structures. David, would you like to, well, does anybody have anything they'd like to say before he begins his presentation? Okay.
Thank you. It's good to be with you today. As many of you may remember, we kicked this project off about February this past year, and we've been kind of working on it behind the scenes, as there's been a lot going on in the city of Athens, a lot going on with the two departments that are represented here today. But what I'm going to do is take you through a couple of steps. First, this is kind of like two presentations in one, because with this project, we were tasked with two different things, which number one was looking at the neighborhood corridor overlay zone. Specifically, the presentation that will be given today is about the public input that we received. The second part of this is, we were tasked with looking at a code audit review and reviewing, basically, your existing land development regulations as they are today. So, I see that's also on the agenda, so I'll just kind of move through both of those steps. But first, I'm going to talk about the neighborhood corridor overlay zone. And I am going to give a little bit of a background as to kind of how we got here today. Of course, this is myself. You did an excellent job of introducing me, so I won't go through that. But I do want to kind of take you guys back to a previous work effort, which I believe was completed about a year and a half ago, which was called the Stimson Avenue Corridor Plan. This really kind of laid the groundwork for the idea of a neighborhood corridor overlay district. Just as a reminder, this study was completely federally funded. It was through a program called the Opportunity Zones Program. So, it was, it wasn't any funding, local funding for this. But really, what it did is cover the areas of Stimson Avenue, West Carpenter Street, and really kind of looked at some, how do we improve this area? You know, this area is becoming more and more of a destination area for the city. And then looking through kind of how to optimize land use. There are a lot of number of concerns that citizens have brought forward. So, from that effort, really came the idea of, well, maybe this overlay zone is a way to what we call implement the plan. So, they are separate initiatives. However, it was kind of the corridor plan was kind of what really launched the idea for the neighborhood corridor overlay zone, which is kind of the best way to describe it. And so, what we're really trying to think through, and what we've been thinking through, is where are the best places to implement this? That's what a lot of the public engagement was really designed to do. Like I said, I'll be determining, or I'll be sharing that with you guys. And I should say during this presentation, if you have any questions, just please feel free to ask if this isn't something, I'd love for this to be interactive. Don't feel like you've got to wait till the end to ask any questions, because it is, I think it's good that, other than some public comments, we're the only thing on the agenda today, because it is kind of a little bit of a long presentation. So, I do apologize in advance for that. So, I did kind of want to mention that there already are a couple of overlay zones in Athens. A lot of times when we're working on a project similar to this, sometimes people hear that term, and they think that it's something completely new and baffling. But you do have a historic district, that's the way that works. So, their underlying zoning is one thing, and then the overlay provides different level of regulations. And the intent is to kind of make a corridor look very similar. I think the best example that you have is your uptown historic district to what we're thinking through and proposing here. Now, there is also a wellhead protection area that is also an overlay zone, so I do want to mention that as well. So, with that, I'm going to go into the, what we're calling the Neighborhood Commercial Overlay Zone Information. And so, really, the idea behind this, and our public input and the feedback we've received really does kind of mirror with this, which is creating a walkable corridor, an extremely inviting walkable corridor with smaller scale retail service businesses. And you already have that to a certain degree. So, it's really about how do we maximize this in these certain locations? Now, I did mention the Stimson Avenue Corridor Plan, and that being the impetus of it, that was the area that we internally felt like made the most sense to have this type of zoning. But as you'll see from the public engagement, we weren't just looking at just this corridor. City staff looked at a few other areas and gave some options as to where people thought this might make sense. So, again, this is for the prioritization of pedestrians, cyclists, and it's really just implementing a proposed policy that's been in your planning documents. I'm always amazed at how, when I do this kind of work, that I see so many communities have a great plan, but they don't take that plan and make the changes in their ordinances to implement it. So, that's what this is really kind of, the nuts and bolts is about. So, we're going to go through some of the ideas that would come with this, but this is an imagery to kind of get your mind thinking about it. When you think about small, or, excuse me, commercial, small-scale commercial, you think of setbacks to the street. And so, this is kind of a rendering that we actually had in the plan that showed kind of how certain types, it doesn't necessarily have to be commercial, it could also be residential, that could still be built to the street. So, with this overlay zone, the public input, we did have specific stakeholder sessions. Those were one-hour sessions with community leaders, business owners, city staff. We had 10 sessions in total. Megan, you may want to give a little more detail about how you had people sign up and all that, but it was very much a free, open sign-up. I think I said this last time, but when I was here, which was, you know, I know there may be someone who may not have known about it, but we tried to make it as open as we could to everyone. And so, there wasn't like a closed-door policy in that we just selected 10 people, or 10 sessions. But we did have that many. We had a public open house, which was quite well-attended. We did kind of two steps in that, was like a brief presentation by myself to kind of outline what this project was about. And then, we had some interactive boards, which I'll show you here in a minute, so people could kind of give us feedback. We also had a community survey as well. So, these are a couple of the photos from our open house. Like I said, it was very well-attended. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was definitely a roomful of people in the fire, this was at the fire hall. The fire chief did tell us afterwards that he was a little bit concerned with the number of people, because we were most likely approaching or did go above the number of people that were, could be in there by the fire code. So, we were either right at it, or even potentially above. But, so we really did have a good turnout. So, we made this kind of open-ended, so that we wanted to, this is one slide that we have, actually tells your thoughts, and we did get a lot, a lot of input from that. Other things that were important, we asked people where they would walk, where they felt comfortable walking, and where they don't feel comfortable walking. Really, what I took away from this is, you can see kind of where people are veering towards feeling comfortable walking and then not. It was amazing how, if you kind of look at the green area of some of these kind of main corridors, people felt comfortable there, but getting to the corridor, not so much. So, although we are looking at a code audit, you know, one thing that I've taken from this is that there are certain areas of town that do have some pretty good sidewalk infrastructure, but areas that are leading to it, people don't feel as safe, or as willing to do it. So, that's one of the, kind of, the thoughts behind this, is not only how do we make the actual corridor that is Stimson Avenue, or corridor that is State Street, but how do we get people to be able to feel comfortable walking from their neighborhoods to come down, instead of getting in their car and going somewhere else? That was a little bit striking to me. A lot of communities, we don't have, I know some of that is because there are hills, there are mountains, you can't do anything about that, obviously, but I did find that kind of striking, that you had a lot of green right on the corridor, and then literally one block off, you had red. So, anything you want to add about that?
About the map itself?
Just the map itself?
Not particularly, no.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I had all the key items there. But we did show, like I mentioned, staff and us came up with where some of these areas, other than Stimson Avenue, that might make sense, this was where we had people kind of graph and doodle on it. I'll say that we really had the most feedback, positive feedback from Stimson Avenue and State Street, which makes sense, which makes sense to us as well. So, I do want to kind of stop there with any comments and questions that you might Anything kind of surprise, or anything you'd like to know more about from the sessions? If not, I do have, I'll go on to kind of the next step, but I want to make sure.
But I think I can wait.
Okay. So, from this, from this process, what we're thinking is that an overlay district, again, overlay district is something that puts, creates an overlay over a different base zoning districts. It's really not so much about how the land is used, it's really about things such as setbacks, making sure that, we talked about how the buildings are built to the street, that's a pedestrian-friendly creation. Parking is in the back, orientation requirements, potentially window requirements, and then signage requirements. This is what you see in a lot of downtown areas. And so, Stimson Avenue is starting, and has historically kind of been in that framework. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. And then, the other things that I really took from this was the sidewalk improvement, we kind of talked about that a little bit. So, from here, we're going to go in and look at, I mentioned the public inputs summary and the surveys. I showed some of the, some of the photos of some of the stuff we received. I'm just going to kind of go a little bit deeper into that right now. And I should mention, before I forget, that the real fine details of this presentation will be put on the city's website. Afterwards, I'll leave that to your staff as to where exactly that will be. But I do want to let everyone know, there's only so much information I can give in a planning commission, but there's, all of that, the surveys, everything is publicly available. So, the way we charted this, and it's a little bit important, is, because we did get a lot of different comments, we got a lot of different comments from the meeting, from the surveys. We looked, we broke these down into categories. Well, first, what we called a theme, and then we broke it down to a category and a subcategory. So, what we're going to go through is not so much what one person said specifically, but where the areas of the same issues kind of kept popping up. So, we got 424 total comments, which is, for this type of project, is pretty substantially high. So, some of the key themes, the real heavy support for small businesses, and one thing that I've seen, definitely seen in my career, is that when you're redeveloping a property, or you're redeveloping an area of town, that really is more set up for small businesses, because a lot of these larger chains kind of have this set prototype of what they want. And that type of character doesn't really have that. So, supporting small businesses is really where, hopefully, some of your small businesses can thrive. That was a major theme of this. We've already talked a little bit about that, active transportation, proved sidewalks, definitely a big theme, trees, green spaces. And then on the community engagement, and this is not surprising, but we see this on a lot of, a lot of projects, but we had a lot of more citizen requests for, I'd like to hear more about this. Want to hear more about the details. You know, I understand the kind of overarching, but how is this actually going to happen on the ground? So, that's kind of where we're moving with this presentation. Obviously, some of the biggest details get fleshed out when you actually have a draft of an ordinance, because that's how things actually are impacted. But I'm going to go through each of these sections. Now, we're going from the most amount of comments to the least amount of comments. So, the largest amount of a theme that we heard was business development. And from that, support of small businesses, which I've got highlighted, was just a massive, massive theme. The zoning and the building form, that's where a lot of these ordinance changes could impact. I was happy to see that the ones that were at the top were a desire for it to be pedestrian-oriented, a desire for how buildings were placed. And then the word straightforward, which goes to what we'll be talking about a little bit later, which is a straightforward zoning code. Today, there are a lot of things in the zoning code that we think could be smoothed out and reorganized, but we'll get to that later in the presentation. So, not surprising, affordable housing came up, we see that in almost every jurisdiction today. It's, again, it's not surprising because of the massive increase that has occurred in housing in the last few years. Going back to this mobility connectivity, we've already kind of touched on this, but improving, increasing sidewalks, creating more multimodal infrastructure, it's interesting that I heard in the crowd right before we were speaking, that there may be a new bike parking location in town. So, I mean, I know that you guys are veering somewhat in this direction, but yeah, there's definitely, that's the heavy results we got. Now, this one is kind of an unfortunate one, but we see it in a lot of places, which is the number, we asked people about parking, the number one response was, we need less parking. The number two response, with only two less, was we need more parking. So, there's really a divide in public perception as to how much parking should be on this corridor. What we see is planning consultants, and this was brought up, it's the one right below it. Obviously, it's a very expensive option, but a new parking garage is something that a number of people did bring up. That's kind of your ideal situation, but obviously, there's a lot of cost and infrastructure that has to go into that. But what we have kind of seen through our experience is that if you have the buildings up at the front and provide a lot of parking on, behind the buildings, that's kind of an ideal situation. So, obviously, that doesn't change overnight with new, with setback requirements, but it's amazing how quickly some of that can change by just, you know, when one building comes down, next time it's built, it's got to be built to the street. Lot of support for traffic calming, things to make the speed of traffic be decreased. And then, these were some of the areas that, smaller areas, trees, again, again, I mentioned the more info desired. And again, the detailed survey data will be published online with this PowerPoint presentation. So, I'll stop with that. Any more questions about the concept of the overlay district, or any questions about the specifics of some of the public input that we received?
You have a question?
I do, sir.
Mr. Stone?
Sure. So, hey, thanks, David. Number one, so if you put an overlay zone in place, just help us with this. Does not change the underlying zoning, but it adds to the underlying zoning. One of the things we heard, as we discussed this earlier on, and I'm assuming you probably heard it from some of the public comment, was support for small business.
Right.
And, you know, I think some feedback we've got from small business owners was that adding requirements doesn't support me.
Right.
And so, can we, through this overlay zone, relax certain requirements and add others?
Yes.
And in that case, what would you, like, and I'm thinking about wall control specifically, what would you say would be an example of a relaxation that would assist a small business while at the same time living a new requirement?
Lower parking standards. That's the biggest one. I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Stone, is lower parking requirements. That was something that came out from our stakeholder... stakeholder sessions significantly. We had numerous people in the stakeholder sessions mention that they, we had some realtors, and we had people that were involved in real estate, talking about how there were properties that they could have had sold, could have had redeveloped, but they could not make the parking standard work. And so, what we are seeing is a nationwide reduction in parking standards, even if it's a downtown district, no matter where it is, there's just not as much need for parking requirements as there previously was. Now, I know that kind of goes against the, some people who may feel the need for more parking, but when you're in a somewhat of a framework where things are built to the street, and you have some other parking options that may be a block or two off, it creates a dynamic of why do I have to have the parking directly right at my door? So, that would be the biggest reduction that I can see, is a loosening of the parking standards. And that's also another good point, when I brought up some of these standards, some people would say, again, I don't want to have an additional requirement on this. I would say, it's not so much an additional requirement, it's a requirement that makes more sense to the character of where you are in the town. Your zoning code today is written across the board more for new development, it's not really created for redevelopment, and that's where the problem comes in. So, I would say, it doesn't change what land uses you can do, but it allows for where you are to make more sense, to get you open and ready to go.
True. So, as a follow-up to that, if parking is indeed the change that the overlay district would relax, you know, one of the reasons we have parking standards in our zoning code, as well as some other enforcement standards in our traffic code, have to do with the, I guess, the ire of neighborhoods, of residential neighborhoods complaining about people using the residential streets in the neighborhood to park for other purposes. And so, do you think that that, or did you hear that in your feedback?
No, we did. We heard, we definitely heard more support for the reduction of the parking standards than we heard from neighborhood residents that said, I don't want the parking to spill onto my property. I would say the ideal solution for that is a new parking deck, but again, that's a very expensive venture, recognize that. Ways to mitigate that, or potentially increased enforcement in those neighborhoods, of course, but I'll say, and this isn't a code issue, but I've seen a lot of jurisdictions that have been very successful at creating signage to let people know when they're coming to a destination place, like downtown, I think of kind of where we're at today as a destination place. Signs that kind of say, veer people where to park. I mean, imagine if you didn't have the parking garage over here today, you know, how spaced out and how difficult it would be. So, you know, I think signage of letting people know where parking is could be, like I said, I've seen a lot of cities create signs that say either reduce park price parking, or free parking, or whatever it may be, to get people to where some of these underutilized parking spaces are. And they're not right on the street, they're usually about a block off.
True.
And, you know, we haven't done a full-scale parking study, but my experience is, when I have done those, is that a lot of the citizens are actually surprised that there are parking spots that are just a block off, that they don't, they just don't drive that way, you know?
True, understand. And then, my second question, I guess, is earlier in the presentation, under the corridor plan goals, I think it said, create policy and development standards and recommendations, one of the items was to mitigate floodplain concerns. Can you help me understand overlay zones and how those mitigate floodway concerns?
Yeah, so, what we could do there is look at, well, we can look at potentially, well, I'll step back and say, one of the things that we heard was about a potential flooding problem, and maybe some landscaping that had been installed, but it hadn't grown up, and there were concerns about that. So, we were thinking of ways that potentially could add some increased density where the floodplain was not, and then, you know, making it pretty clear that these areas that were flood-impacted were definitely not going to be built up. So, there's kind of a strategy there. But I'll say, overall, the idea is to keep things kind of pushed to where the development is going, and making sure that off-site areas, that maybe the development doesn't need to be, doesn't create more problems for you in the future. That was kind of where we're going with that comment.
So, basically, one of the things that is trying to be accomplished in the Stimson Corridor is to refocus on more locally, local businesses that service that local area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, if you talk about restaurants, it's really targeting a limited number of people, particularly if you reduce parking.
Yeah, well, if there are other alternative locations that can be determined to make it easier for people to walk from, that are right off the corridor, I would say that my experience has been that that doesn't decrease your overall volume. You know, one of the things that I found interesting from some of our stakeholder meetings was just the number of people who did say that a lot of their business was from walking traffic. It was not from someone just parking right out front of their door and coming in. So, we know that there's already some of that. So, you're not kind of starting from scratch there.
I mean, how do you combat the people don't go, right? I mean, we had a very nice Chinese restaurant with dine-in capability there, and one of the reasons it closed is because people didn't go and didn't eat there. And so, like, you know, I have a colleague that has a business on Court Street, and, you know, he complains that people tell him, why, you know, I really support small business. He's like, well, why didn't you come? It's like, oh, I don't want to go to Uptown Athens. They want to go out to East State Street where they can park right in front of the door. So, how do you combat that with zoning?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. What I would say, number one, is that, first off, it's in certain locations, it's really hard to make the parking standard work. I don't want to reiterate some of the points that I've mentioned before, but I guess I will, which is that we've seen a real problem with getting some businesses to even open, to have the chance to thrive, because they couldn't meet the parking requirement.
Gotcha.
Now, as far as getting people that are there, I think the biggest thing the city can do to support that is making it clear where available parking is that is not right at the door. I mean, if you were to take a Google Maps, for the average person, let's say they, I don't know the name of the Chinese restaurant, but they, most likely, they wanted to go one day, they'd plug in their phone and say Chinese restaurant, and they would just drive right by the front door, and they would see there's not any parking. Just the switch of getting people to realize, okay, when I came, for example, today, I did not put in City Hall in my Google, I said City Garage Parking Lot. When there is a destination that people can go to, and they know where that is, then they're willing to make that walk. Otherwise, they may not really know it. So, that's why I say the garage is the ultimate item, but maybe there's some smaller areas that could compensate to, and again, we haven't done a full-scale parking survey, but it's getting that mindset of away from just driving to the door and then parking. One of the things I did when I was in the public sector, that really, when I worked for a city in Tennessee, was I showed a map one time of the distance from the front door of the Walmart to the very back end of the Walmart parking lot, and then showed it in the downtown area, and it was literally like three and a half blocks in downtown, you know? So, people's perception of space, unfortunately, in downtown areas is not, I think is a hindrance, unfortunately. So, from a zoning perspective, creating areas that are built that are more inviting, more pedestrian-oriented, so people feel comfortable walking and safe walking, and then creates buildings that aren't built, because today, with the setbacks the way you are, you have maybe one building here that's not in front of the street, one building that's here, and it makes the traffic patterns really confusing. But think about, ideally, if all the buildings were right up on the street, and then there's just parking behind it, now you've got kind of a destination place where people are going and parking. That's the ideal situation, not every city has that. I've seen some cities that have done that, and they've really highlighted where their parking is, and it's, I'm amazed at how it changes the dynamic, so.
So, an argument, and talk maybe a little bit about this, I got a sense of it, but, so if somebody were saying, well, you know, you're going to put an overlay zone and make things more challenging for me, it actually maybe reduces my ability to use my land as I was once able to, or before the overlay. Why don't you just speak to that a minute, about why that's maybe not the case, or?
Yeah, I do think there's a general perception that people think that an overlay district adds standards to them, and it can, but it can also decrease standards for them. Again, it can create a standard that makes more sense for the location that they're in. Most overlay zoned districts, it is true, do increase standards, but there's no legal reason why you can't also decrease them. Parking is the best example for your project that I can definitely think of. You know, a setback requirement that brings something to the street isn't necessarily more restrictive, it just changes the requirement. So, I think that I do understand people's concern about that. What I would say is that on these types of projects, these types of drafts, it's kind of the devil's in the detail, it's really how it's written. And if it's written in a way that creates the ability for buildings to be used that were previously not used, such as the case with setbacks and parking, then I would say it's not more restrictive, it's less restrictive.
Does anybody else here on the commission have anything they'd like to say?
I think I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
And I did attend the, thank you for the open house in February, and I've kind of followed this along, and I realized, so this is one part, or specific, for Stimson Avenue, the overlay, although, as you present it with the map, there could be other areas in town that have these overlay zones. So, now you're going to talk, and so I take away from your saying that parking is one issue, bulk controls, and we've made some moves to change our bulk controls this past year to make that less restrictive.
Yeah, I definitely support those, and we've seen that.
So, now, we're going to the code audit review, and I'm assuming then, it's a tangled web for me, so, because I'm imagining that you're going to talk about the code audit review, and how we can simplify that perhaps, so that we make more, we make development possible, not only new development, but redevelopment is the other thing I'm hearing.
Correct.
So, those are the things you're going to be talking to us next about?
That's correct. And so, the code audit is not just these corridor overlay areas, it's citywide view.
Right, okay.
I'm going to give kind of a high-level view of your zoning code, your regulations throughout the whole city code, anything that's a land development code. So, this is, what I'm about to go through is not...
Well, before we move on to the code audit review, I'd like to make sure we've completed any discussion we have here on this overlay. Ms. Jennings, would you like to add?
I just wanted to add a couple of things. Mr. Stone, the floodplain comments that you brought up, those were specifically from the Stimson Avenue Corridor Plan, and the neighborhood corridor overlay zone is inspired by that plan, but it is not an implementation item of that plan. So, I just wanted to clarify the relationship between these two documents. The overlay zone itself is going to be general in nature, and can be applied on multiple corridors around town. We do think Stimson Avenue would be an appropriate place to apply that overlay zone, and it will probably be one of the first corridors that we would apply that, but we have identified at least a handful of other places around town where this overlay zone would be appropriate. The overall goal of the overlay zone is to create neighborhood-scale retail and commercial. It's not to craft, you know, like an economic draw similar to that of East State Street. These developments, our goal is to create neighborhood-scale commercial and retail that will directly serve the neighborhoods next door. We're not saying that people can't drive to these areas, but we do have to make incremental changes, which allow for development that isn't auto-dependent, and that can be accessed by multimodal transportation methods, as well as pedestrians in the neighborhoods next door. I think that when you look at East State Street in particular, those commercial uses aren't exactly walkable or accessible, even though there's a neighborhood right across the street. There's just a lot of pavement to get through, and not many pedestrian-specific infrastructure in place to access at least the storefronts. Excuse me. So, our goal with this overlay zone is to really enable development that supports multimodal and pedestrian-accessible development. And we do have to consider, like, the future of Athens, 40, 60 years down the road. How will we need to adjust our code now, so that we have development that is environmentally sustainable, economically sustainable, and also socially sustainable? I think currently, our auto-dependent development patterns don't really get us to where we want to be as a city, and this overlay zone is one way to achieve that neighborhood-scale accessible development across our city that serves our neighborhoods, so.
I'd just add something to that, and I agree with everything that Megan said. What we see when we are looking at different code, not just the city of Athens, but other cities, is that a lot of zoning doesn't do a very good job at small-scale commercial. You know, the zoning that is appropriate for auto-dependent, large-scale commercial, it's written the way it is, it makes sense, but small-scale commercial, which is what you have in these corridors, the zoning really doesn't match what ideally it should be. And again, that's not just in the city of Athens, we see that in a lot of places. And so, Megan made a comment, I don't know if you can, I'm going to jump way far back in the slides, but go back to the sticker dot exercise, and I know we may not be seeing that online, but the comment she had about State Street is really where it jumped out to me, is that the actual on State Street, we had a lot of green dots saying, I feel very comfortable, but right after one block off of it, it was very, people felt very uncomfortable with it. So, and that kind of goes along with, her comments are very much echoed with what we heard from the public on that.
So, can we go back to those slides? Because that one and the one right after it. So, my question is, you're saying people feel comfortable walking on State?
Well, just a certain section of State Street.
Got it, okay.
You can see where those green areas are, and once you get further down State Street to the right side, it becomes very red. But there's a certain area, where it's a little kind of mixed use in that area, people said, hey, I feel comfortable there. But as far as coming from the neighborhoods or moving further down, they didn't feel that.
So, can we go to the next slide?
Yeah.
Because that's your potential overlay, and I don't know if we can zoom in on that at all or not, or maybe you can just kind of describe them. I mean, it looks like South Side, Richland Avenue, looks like West Side, maybe Schaefer Street area, looks like Uptown maybe, or Union, maybe that's Union, and then East State. So, is that, does that pretty much?
Yes. You can see down here in the right-hand corner, it says, it says the locations, Columbus Road, East State Street.
Oh, got it, okay, thank you.
Stimson Avenue, East State Street, West State Street, Schaefer, West Union Street, and Richland Avenue.
Okay.
So, we did have a good bit of doodling here, but I can tell you, the areas that we had the most support were definitely on, the portion of East State Street, which is highlighted in red, and the portion of Stimson Avenue... highlighted in red, and the portion of Stimson Avenue, which is also, so two and three with, you can see where people, where we kind of blocked off a certain section of two, because there was not as much support for it there. So very much the Stimson Avenue and a portion of State Street was where the support publicly was for.
That's interesting. And west of the freeway where you say on State Street where there's less support for it is where we've actually got Kindred Village Bakery, the Biceria, Avalanche.
I'm not sure that map is fair representation of the support.
Okay.
I do think that the west side of East State Street is the more appropriate place for the overlay zone, where the east side of East State Street going past the community center is not maybe the place where this overlay zone needs to be applied, just due to the volume of traffic.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I have to say, I missed, the area that is in black, which is the hash dot, is the area that was the desired area, and the area that, where three is, is pretty much that whole corridor was the desired area.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Before we move on to the code audit review, is there anybody who wants to speak to the overlay zone discussion we've been having in the audience? We do have, gentlemen. Microphone, name an address, name an address.
Paul Hiller, 110 Morris Avenue. I'm curious specifically, I've heard relaxing parking requirements for some of the businesses to encourage development, new development, redevelopment, but what are some of the specific zoning changes that would take place that would encourage new development or redevelopment in those? And that's, because otherwise, we're already kind of doing that, you know, we've got a local business owner that came to city council and said, hey, I'd like to have this rezoned. So what can we do to our existing zoning? Does that come later in the zoning audit that we kind of figure out some of those specifics on how we either relax or put controls in place or rezone to encourage new development?
Yeah, I can address that.
Okay.
So there are standards and then there are procedures, and what we, what you have today is a lot of times somebody, let's say they can't meet the parking standard, or they can't meet a certain standard, they come before the board and ask for a variance. That is a time-intensive process, which you don't know whether they're going to make it through that process or not. If it's just, we like to say, you know, we want to create a system that works well the first time around, not so much that someone has to jump through a lot of different requirements to get where we all want to be. So the code, you know, one of the things we do when we look at making changes is take a long look at what variances have occurred in the past, and do those, do those things need to be by right instead of having to require a variance? Because what'll happen is, a lot of times in today's fast-moving world, someone who is local may know to call Megan, they may know to call the mayor, but someone who's from out of town, and I've worked with people who do this, they'll work for someone that'll look in and look at the code and say, okay, how quickly can we get this approved? Is it going to be a long process? Is it going to, how uncertain is it? So we're finding that economic development opportunities are being lost, not just in the way the standard is, but the procedure and how that is done. So there's a lot of things that, and we're going to, in the code audit, you mentioned, kind of give a big picture view of this, but one of the things that we can do is to create, is to really look at where the variance is, look at things that people are asking as an exception, and if we're comfortable with those exceptions, let's just write them into the standards instead of making them go through additional requirements.
So the overlay would actually be brought this for current businesses or new businesses?
That's correct.
While kind of putting some control in place to make sure we have better development in the city.
Yeah.
And sees a sustainable growth for Athens.
And I'm really glad you asked that question.
Do you have any other examples as far as here about relaxing parking, some of the other zoning changes, like, okay, we see that, you know, we can change this from an R1 to an R3. Do you have any quick specifics on overlay zoning changes?
Paul, yeah, we do need you at the microphone, because...
Well, I'll address what...
Otherwise, the people who are watching are not hearing you.
Yeah, well, I'll repeat his question kind of before I answer it, which is, he was asking what other specific requirements can be done with an overlay district. The overlay district, it is important to know that it doesn't change the base zoning district. So it doesn't change what land uses, or the way we're envisioning, or what land uses could be applied here or there. Now, it could, if there's something that really on that corridor makes sense to have, but maybe there are, because in this corridor, there are multiple different zoning districts, it's not just one. But if there is a land use that makes sense on this corridor that is prohibited in an underlying zoning district, you could write the standard to say, well, in this overlay district, regardless of your underlying zoning district, this land use will be approved. I don't think we've really got to that point yet, but when we're writing it, if there is something that, you know, staff is comfortable with, we would make a recommendation to do that and then talk about it further.
Megan, did you have something?
Yes, if there were other public comments, I can wait to learn.
Do you want to make a public comment, ma'am? So, come to the podium, state your name and address, and then I'm going to swear you in because you didn't, you weren't here when we did that initially.
I had to take off work to get here.
I'm sorry about that.
And my parking meter has just run out, so I hope I don't get a ticket.
Thank you for coming.
Susan Guilford, 37 Sunset Drive.
Okay. May, would you raise your right hand and indicate with an affirmative response that everything you'll say here is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
True and accurate to the best of my knowledge.
Okay.
And my, my comment is similar to the previous speakers, but I'm talking about Columbus Road, and right now it looks like there's a B1, if I remember correctly, business zoning for what used to be the Dairy Queen. And part of that B1 zoning, there's several problems with that. One is that the Dairy Queen was somehow manipulated into being a drive-through, which means that those of us who live on Sunset Drive sometimes couldn't get to our homes because there were customers for the Dairy Queen, and they thought that that first part of Sunset Drive was all of Dairy Queen, and they would just drive through the middle of the road and we couldn't get through. And I have a, had a problem with that when my mother was still alive, because what happens if I needed an ambulance? And there were customers in the way. My mother passed a year ago, and so I no longer have that problem, plus the Dairy Queen closed down, what, two years ago? Does that sound right? But there are other elderly people who live on Columbus Road, and if another business goes in there with another drive-through, think about the possible hazard.
So we're looking at that with regard to the zoning changes there, but those are being reviewed right now by the administration, comments and things that we receive from others. Right now, we're really just talking about the Stimson overlay zone and potentially some other areas that might make sense for that, and that's where I'd like to keep the discussion right now.
So not Columbus Road today?
Not today, no.
All right. Then I should come to the next meeting?
Well, I, you'll have to watch the agenda, I'm not sure when it will be back on the agenda.
All right.
The Columbus Road zoning.
But there is another point that I'd like to make.
Okay.
The current zoning, boundary, goes right through my neighbor's living room, which is also not a very good idea.
Yeah.
So if something can be done about that, that would be terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll go attend to my party.
Yeah, I just was going to mention, to the location you're referring to, you know, Columbus Road, Sunset, Lancaster, Columbia, is that we are, we had someone come to the last planning commission meeting and speak to this, and where we've kind of landed with that is that the commissioners who are available are going to work with a smaller group and really look at what our city planner has been talking about for that particular area, recognizing that there's some areas in there that what was being proposed is likely not going to work, and we hear the concerns of those who have properties there. So that conversation is going to happen, I don't know exactly when, and it would likely be a separate meeting outside of the planning commission meeting so that we could really take a deep dive and hear what everyone, what their thought is on that, but I appreciate you coming and talking about, in particular, the Dairy Queen property, which we are very, very familiar with, the challenges, and also recognizing that Columbus Road, that was US 33, as it came into the city of Athens, so it's got, it's got right-of-way issues unto itself in how that was all laid out and the plat that existed before, but know that we're, we are going to take that up for those who can attend.
Very good. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
So, I'm Rob Delitch, live on Morris Avenue, 124 Morris Avenue here in the city of Athens, and probably no surprise to those of you that know me, but I'm really excited about these proposals, and the things I've heard are all things that I welcome. I welcome these, these changes. And one thing just to mention as well is, there's a chapter of Strong Towns for Athens that's being formed right now, in fact, we have our first meeting in October. I've been doing something called Athens Curbside Conversations, to talk about these kind of subjects and to promote conversations about how Athens can be an even better place than it already is, and I think this is a great example of that. Strong Towns is an organization that is, helps local people work to make their cities better, more financially resilient and strong. And this kind of development that the overlay would promote is exactly the kind of thing that Strong Towns is a big proponent of, as an organization, it's a national organization. In particular, the kind of development that this is promoting would be smaller scale, neighborhood scale, and, or essentially downtown scale in some respects, and those kind of properties, they have much larger economic impact per acre and financial impact for the city per acre than, for example, Walmart or big box stores do. So there's a lot of wasted space in those big box stores and the commercial development that you can get a lot more bang for your buck in these corridors, and it's going to be much more efficient for the city and for the businesses there to produce revenue and to really help the city financially in a lot of ways, too. So I see this as a great, great step in our direction, really encourage this. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're now ready to do the audit, oh, excuse me.
I just wanted to announce that I do have a couple extra copies of, paper copies of the Public Engagement Summary Report available here at the meeting if anyone in the audience is interested. And then I did want to announce that I will upload the Public Engagement Summary Report as well as the raw data, as well as David's PowerPoint and the link to this meeting, to the Planning and Development webpage within the city's website. So I just wanted to announce that publicly, that these will be hosted online here soon. Thank you.
So the last thing I'll mention before going to the code audit portion is that overall, overarching synopsis, I think it is very fair to say that the suggestions and the ideas that we are looking at based on the public input we received are, they connect. There's not a disconnect between that. I mean, there is, obviously, there's a range, I brought up the one where some people think more parking, less parking, not, but generally speaking, the public involvement that we received is supportive of these concepts, and so I think it's great that you've, you're starting this, the Strong Towns group, but I will say that's not the case in every community we are in, but I definitely saw an overarching support, so. Let me add with that, with the caveat of, I want to hear more information. So a lot of times people really want to get in the nitty-gritty, and I understand that, and so it's going to be important when we do move forward with some draft recommendations that we are looking at the details. I like to say the devil's in the details, and it absolutely is. So it, I encourage anyone who is skeptical to read the details and help us iron out what can be the best ordinance moving forward. With that, we're going to move on to what we refer to as a code audit. Again, this is not just an audit of the code that exists for Stimson Avenue or any other street. This is a broad-ranging, overarching review of all land development ordinances. There's a lot more detail that I could go into on this, I'm just going to really hit the highlights. But I do think, again, if you have questions, please stop me, and I can go into more detail on whatever the section is. The first thing we really noticed, and I'm going to hit this slide and the next slide, because you can't really understand it without seeing, basically it took me two pages to completely encapsulate this. Most cities that we work with, when we start this code audit review, there may be two or three titles that have land development regulations. There are literally two pages worth for the city of, for the city of Athens, excuse me. And the reason I believe that's happened is just over time, there've been incremental changes, there've been incremental additions, and not a full-scale review of all ordinances. So this, it makes it very difficult on your staff. I know from, David Riggs couldn't be here, but your assistant director's here, and I'm sure he would say the same thing that David has told me multiple times, which is that there's a lot of conflicts within these ordinances, and it's very difficult for staff to be able to sort through multiple code chapters, multiple different things, definitions phrased slightly differently. So again, you've got, literally it took me two pages worth to do that. Usually, we see about two or three ordinances that we're looking at combining, but there's quite a bit here. So this framework unfortunately sets up a dynamic where we believe there's more conflict than there needs to be. And so often, we did have some citizens who noticed this, but a lot of times that becomes personal, when in reality, if we smooth the code out, we clarify the code, we put definitions to make everything very clear, then it reduces what the requirement, or it reduces the friction. So, you know, it's only natural for one person to read something that is to their advantage, whereas the city may not see it exactly that way or have not interpreted it that way. So a lot of what we're looking at at this is to try to ideally consolidate these chapters, reorganize this in a way that makes sense, and you don't have any duplicative requirements or anything that may be slightly different. So the documents that we created as part of this code audit are the, what I call an annotated outline, and I'm going to give an example of each of these. An annotated outline is like a big table of contents that says if we were to reorganize all the ordinances, this is how we would do this. Mr. Stone, I did receive your comments, I will answer all of those, I received them just here recently. There are some fine-tuning that we need to do with that draft, but that, what I find is when we, if we actually do have a project where we are reorganizing it, as we go through the project, there's always a little bit of tweaking to get it just right. But in general, there's no reason that these can't be consolidated into what we would refer to as a unified development ordinance. A lot of our clients are moving towards that to make the administrative process easier, to make it more clear for someone who's just pulling up and thinking about investing in the city of Athens. Today, I mentioned there are people, I've worked with them before, that are paid by companies to look at codes and to say, how easy is this code? How difficult would it be to come to Athens and work through this process? Unfortunately, I would say, just because... I would say just because of where everything is organized, if someone's going to look at that today and be very concerned because of just of the amount of different ordinances and potential conflicts. So that's a high, high arching kind of statements. But also what we have is what we call land use adjustment. And I'll explain that a little bit more. Land use and conditional standards. I think, again, I'll, I'll go through it when I hit the slides, and then a legal review. These are key federal legal issues that we find a lot in municipal codes. And so we, we, we like to take a look and, and, you know, say whether you're in compliance or not, and suggest edits based upon that. So this is the annotated outline that I, I mentioned. I took out this portion of it. Again, the full version is a public record. It's available for review. But I took these sections specifically because two areas that we find that is very, very beneficial for staff, and I can say this myself as someone who used to work in the public sector and would get calls about, can I do this land use in this zoning district? Today, everything is very, very text-based. So David or any of his staff have to look in that, the book and say, and kind of jot through things. It makes it very difficult to give a very quick answer. When you have what's called a land use table, which I'm going to jump down to, which this is a, a portion of a land use table, that basically sets out and says whether something is permitted, whether it has additional standards, or whether it's prohibited. Now, I know we can, I know there may be some desire for different terminology within this, this, but the basic point here is to have something in your code that makes it very clear for someone, not, not only staff, but it reduces staff time because someone can get in the code and just see, okay, this one's permitted, this one has additional standards, where's the standards that I go to? Today, you don't have all of that. So it makes it very confusing, and it makes it to where someone really has to come to staff. You know, I think what you'll find if we move to this type of format, what staff will find is that slowly but surely they're going to get less calls because it's something that they, it's much easier for the public to be able to go in and pinpoint, you know, yes, I can do this, or no, that I can't, I can't do it in this, this district. So that's the land use table, land use matrix, if you will. And then we can do the same thing with dimensional standards. There's a lot of things in the zoning ordinance that don't, that doesn't have to be written in kind of a legalistic term. It can be put into tables and boxes and, and things like that. Today, you don't, you don't have any of that. You don't have any area, there are certain areas that might need, or that do need a graphic. You know, we've got some graphics that can be inserted or entwined to make it easier for those who are visual learners to be able to take, take that and look at it and then kind of understand the requirement. So again, this lists out throughout the whole code, but that's what the annotated outline is. On the far right, we do fill out if there are any, anything special that needs to be known. This section, there really wasn't, but in other areas of the annotated outline there, there was. Any questions on that? Kind of hierarchy or high-level item? Okay. Well, I'll move on to what I call this land use adjustment table. So this is, I mentioned where staff has a difficult time reviewing sometimes. And this really hits what the biggest problems are. So today, you have a lot of land use terms that are very, very similar in nature. They mean something very, very similar. It's just one little nuance. And so when you think about the example I've used here as heavy manufacturing, you have all of these different terms for them that have developed over time. Really, they function the same way. You know, it's a, it's a, it, it, it has some environmental impacts potentially. It has things that obviously the public doesn't need to walk into. So there's really no reason to put them as different things. So what we find is that maybe you have, for instance, David Riggs leaves, somebody else is in his position. He, David may have viewed the difference between welding and other melding, and another metal working shop a little bit differently. So when a new staff person comes in and they view it slightly differently, because it's not really spelled out. And today, there aren't, not everything has a land use definition, but, and that makes it really clear. So the best way to do that is to fold all of these terms together, make them one item. And then if there are any little tweaks that need to be done, you can do that in what we call can, the next step, which is down here for conditional use standards. So when you see something that says a U S here, that's what, in our terminology, again, the terminology can be, can be changed. But it basically says, heavy manufacturing. In the M zoning district, there's a U standard. So it's not just permitted by right, but there are additional standards. Then you have it listed out that says what that additional standard is in an easy-to-format list. In your existing code today, these are very spread out. There are a lot of times, not everything, but there's times where someone looks in the code and they'll say, okay, I think I can do heavy manufacturing. There's not additional requirement. And then maybe say you have a new staff person, they call that staff person, they say, well, I think, I think that's all you got to do, but I'm going to have to research the code and make sure about that. And then they call them back and say, oh, here's another little additional thing. What we find is that to someone who's looking to develop their property, that's very frustrating, as you can imagine. So getting these requirements up front and knowing what they are and creating a code that does that, we find just so mu, so many benefits from that. So I want to jump back to this, this land use adjustment table that I have. You can see on the far left, this is what we call a proposed land use term, and the others are what they are today. So a great example, another great example is office general. Today, you have the terms professional office, you have philanthropic institution, business office, and offices. Each one of those aren't, they're not defined, but they really mean the same thing as office general. They've just been called different things throughout the years in the code. So the question becomes, to permit a business office, is that different than a professional office? It's hard to really know unless you look at a definition. And there's, sometimes there's not a definition there for, for staff to help with. So what happens is it just becomes an interpretation. And, and that's not really where you want to be because, you know, staff may have a very valid way of viewing it. But if somebody, you know, has a deemed interest, they may view it somewhat, somewhat differently than what, how it's been applied through the years. So that creates a conflict that we just, we don't want to have moving forward. So these are some of the tables that we kind of show as examples to, to set out the process. But overarching, there's a lot that can be done throughout the zoning code, throughout other areas of the code, particularly the zoning code, to make this much more of a user-friendly setup than it is today. That would be without changing any of the standards. Now, I did mention that there's some conflicts in, in the ordinances. And every time I've done this with a jurisdiction, we always find more and more conflicts as we go on. It's not, you know, it's not the opposite direction. So what we've talked about with staff is potentially having a project where we're reorganizing this and trying to make it as streamlined as possible without changing any of the requirements. So that's kind of what we've talked about on the, the outset. Any questions on that? Okay. Well, I'm going to go through the, what I call the federal legal scan. These are things that, in my practice, I've found, because I, I do this across the country, that a lot of times planners and other staff members are very well knowledgeable about what's going on in, in an individual state. But there are some things that we found that we need to take into consideration from a legal, federal level. So a religious, or a law that is a federal law, it's got a acronym of what we call RALUBA. It basically means that religious and non-religious activities have to be treated the same. So today, in your code, you have churches and other places of worship, and then you have recreational and community center buildings. The problem here is that you have one that is permitted potentially in certain zoning districts, and another one that's permitted in another zoning district. I've actually done some consulting with some jurisdictions where I've had to inform them that, you know, even though your zoning code does not explicitly say churches and other places of worship where recreation and community center buildings are permitted, you really want, you're going to need to permit that because of federal law. If you think about it, they function the same way. Regardless of whether someone's walking into a building for religious use, or an institutional use, or a public use, they're still kind of doing the same thing. They're gathering together. So the law is meant to not, to not discriminate versus whether it's a religious use or a non-religious use. It's very interesting, actually, how this law came to be about. One, it was actually, it was, it was really championed, championed by people, for example, who were having like Bible studies at the, at their house, and someone was, you know, would might call and say, well, you're, you're not zoned for, for being a church. And, and so that's how some of these things kind of came about. So it's interesting I, I say that because it was something that was very much pushed as a religious right type of law. But there are implications that, that are in zoning ordinances, not just yours, but other jurisdictions, which we see as, you know, a good bit.
I have a question on this one. So, you know, as it stands now, and maybe there's not, there's not a solution to this problem. This problem might just be a problem we have to wrestle with. Right, right now, churches are permitted in our ones, as our schools. And those are, but, but other places of assembly are not. And so I think if we were to, to try to keep it that way, then we'd either have to say there's no churches permitted in our ones, nor schools.
Yeah, you'd have to do it one or the other way. You'd have to say either public assemblies are permitted, or, or you'd have to say churches are not permitted. It's, it's not, you, you can't just say one is permitted and the other one's not. And that's kind of the, I mean, there are two different ways to go with it legally.
I mean, it sounds like what you're saying is that our zoning is illegal related to that. Because right now, you could put a church in our one, but you can't put another public assembly there.
I don't like to use that word exactly, but I would say it is not in compliance with federal law.
All right, all right.
Yeah. That's, that's the attorney. I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't want to use that word, illegal. But yeah, it, it's problematic, and it's something that our recommendation is to, to think through sooner rather than later. And I, and I'll say in the interim, if, you know, before a text change can be made, it's very important to be knowledgeable about this because where jurisdictions have gotten in trouble is they're not knowledgeable about it, and someone comes in and has a suggestion. I was literally in the middle of a zoning code rewrite for one project, and my, my contact, basically in Megan's position, just happened to mention this. And, 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 you know, we, basically that they initially, they went and moved immediately to, to deal with it. Without knowing it, it's, it's something that a lot of jurisdictions unintentionally violate because they're just not knowledgeable about it. So the, the other one is what we call content neutral sign code. So this was from a recent US Supreme Court decision in Reed v. Gilbert. The way to think about this is to say, unless there's a general exception, and there are some exceptions, if you have to read the sign to determine how to classify it, then, then you're, you're not in compliance with the law. So existing sign content regulations, political sign, real estate sign, rental sign, the way of classifying those, you have to, to read it to think through how it's classified. So when we redo codes, we shift it to being a temporary yard sign, or it's, it's regulation is based on the size, the shape, regardless of the exact message that is being conveyed. So we're seeing a national shift from this. I do like to point out, the United States Supreme Court has not agreed, had, has not had nine to nothing decisions on a lot of things in recent years. This was actually, believe it or not, a nine to nothing decision. So it is not something that is likely to, to change. Really, the way to think about it is why should someone in one industry have more speech rights than another person? And that's really what you're doing when you're saying a real estate sign over another type of signage. So you've really got to regulate them by the type of sign. Now, there are some things that you can do with suspending temporary sign requirements during political campaigns. There are some things that have been deemed legal, and there are some exceptions to this. There's an exception for billboards. It's called location, time, manner requirement under the law. So it does get very detailed. But generally speaking, it's not just the city of Athens. It's every city that is having 95, 95 to 98% cities, I'd say, across the country are having to redo their sign codes because of this, because of this federal law. Any, any other questions on that? Federal housing law, this is one where I think you've got, got this one pretty well covered under your, under the term residential healthcare facilities. And those are both in residential and commercial areas. The only thing I would say to make sure you're in compliance with this is adding a definition into the code because it's not defined. And again, when you don't have a definition, it can, you know, what exactly is it? I was asked in the, when I was in the public sector about an exact definition of, it wasn't this term, but of what, what exactly legally is an accessory attached dwelling one time. And my answer was, we don't have a definition for it. So when you don't have a definition, and it is so open to interpretation. So this is a good example of where you, you want to have one that fits with what that federal law is, so that it's not misinterpreted. So any other, I know that's a lot of stuff in a very short period of time, but any other, any big comments, questions, you know, that you, kind of things that jump out at you or follow-up questions you might have?
What's your next steps with regard to this code audit? What, what, what additional work do you have to do?
Well, the, the audit itself is complete, which is what we were under contract-
And that's what you were under contract for.
To do. We have talked, and I don't want to speak for David Riggs, but I do know he's got some discretionary funding. I don't know how much is available, but we were going to target those areas of the code that make the most sense to modify. But we, I, I, we haven't set down with, you know, here's how much budget we have, how much, how much edits we can do. I mean, we've, we've targeted where those areas that really need the most changes immediately, but we haven't put pen to paper on the exact scope of what that would be. What we're only under contract for now is doing the actual code audit, which was the, the documents that I mentioned and the presentation here today.
Will, will you or your organization make a similar presentation to city council?
We'd be happy to, yes.
Is, is that something as a, a community we want to do, or would that be helpful for them and, and helpful in the entire processes in, as whatever we do in terms of any modifications we move forward with? Does that make sense, or? I just was curious. I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or another, I guess.
Yeah, we'd be happy, we'd be happy to do that if that's what, you know, the mayor-
Well, the city, you may ask, you know, there may be some further discussion with it. So any, any, any other comments here or with our staff? No, at this point?
Got a million thoughts, but.
And is there anybody?
There's a lot that got thrown out there, and it may be something that, you know, you may want to take a little time to digest.
Sure.
I certainly understand that. Kind of the overarching thing I'll say is that there's a lot that can be done in the structure of the code, the procedure of the code that can improve the, the code itself without even touching what the standards are. And I think that is something that a lot of people don't really think about as much, but it's critically important. Because a lot of the, you know, the, the conflicts are over, do I have to meet this standard, or do I have to meet that standard, right? But the way the ordinance is written and the way that it's put together, the way it makes it easier for people to find information, our experience is it critically decreases tension and makes life- tension and makes life a lot easier for everyone, so.
I have a, a general comment, if I may, with all this, you know, I find all this really interesting, you know, and especially the streamlining of things. When you sit and reflect on the fact that the city of Athens is over 227 years old, and if you go back in the clerk of council's office and look at some of those stacks back there of documentation, now that's not code, but it's whatever, it's legislation-
Right.
-from the 1820s. Are there, so I do have a question. That was my comment. I'm well aware of much newer cities, and it could be anywhere in the United States. You know, the one that comes to mind to me is a city that's 20 years old, outside of Sacramento, California, Rancho Cordova, you know, that's 20 years old. And are there examples out there of municipalities that have maybe worked with you and have streamlined things that we can, make it easier for us, all of us, to digest?
Yeah, absolutely.
And see what they've done?
Absolutely. So, we are currently working with the city of Chillicothe on a very similar process. We're about to, we are literally in the adoption process for that. We, we're also working with the city of Troy on some process. We've done codes in Indiana, Greendale, Greensburg, working with Green Castle. For some reason, we like greens in Indiana. And Johnson County is another one. An example of a project I did before I came to American Structure Point was the city of Fullshire, Texas. I should say, I worked in, with a company that this is mainly what they did for seven years before I came to American Structure Point. So, there's a lot of examples that we can give. The best one in Ohio right now is Chillicothe that's about to be adopted, but we've done, or I've done work, and I say "we" because our group leader that I work with, we both worked together at a previous company, and now we've come to this company. So, we've definitely got a history that we can share with you guys of, of what cities we've worked with and where we've, we've helped the streamlining and expediting a process.
Chillicothe would be good. I mean, it, to me, I think it's better if it's a municipality in the state of Ohio.
Sure.
Because someone would sit there and go, yeah, of course, it's California, they're doing X.
Well, we haven't done any California.
I'm not saying you. I'm not saying you.
But-
It was my example with Rancho Cordova. Okay.
And I certainly understand that, and we get that, no matter what state we're in. But, yeah, we've done a lot in Indiana, we've done a lot in Ohio. We've got a couple of projects that are just about to finish in Ohio, so we can give you those examples.
And you've been working with the city of Athens for several years.
Right, our, our company has, and I've, I've been involved in, with the plan, and now through this as well, so.
Is, is there any public comment about this particular topic from anybody here? Okay, thank you. So, that, that completes the communications section. We've been running, we've run pretty late. Are there any reports that we need to receive today?
I don't have any reports.
Nothing, okay. Okay, so, who's going to speak to that?
I just saw.
Yeah, so did I. I, I knew that, well, at any rate, is that something we need to deal with here?
So, actually, I can make a, make a comment on it specifically. So, so what, our law director advised us, or advised me to relay on to you, Mr. Chair, is that in order for us to ask for a legal opinion from the law director with regards to the two developments in the plains that we heard about last week, is we need some further input from the, the city administrative staff, specifically David, to be provided to planning commission, and we need to pose a question specifically that we, that we sent to the law director for, for a legal opinion. So, at this point, we only have information about one of the two from David, and so I would, I would contend, we need to ask staff to, to produce that, and then, and then planning commission can, can make a formal request to the law director for specifically what we're, we're asking her to provide us an opinion on.
Okay. So, so, so what we're, we're talking about is the three-mile radius and the, and the projects being proposed, at least right now, one officially being proposed for the, for the plains. And as I understand it, so at our last meeting, we had several people from the plains who ended up making some presentation and comment, and they provided us with, with their legal counsel's review of that, which, which I now have here in front of me and other, other members have as well. I also saw notes from Mr. Riggs where he felt like, that based on his review anyway, that there was no action we needed to change. It was not, it didn't fall under our subdivision regulations or any other regulations, correct? Okay. So, now, what we're, what we're doing as a commission is, is asking the administration, in particular, the code office, and in conjunction maybe with the planning office, to delve more deeply into this and come back and provide us with some additional information?
Yeah, right. And then I think at that point, we can make the request, or to, to the law director for a legal opinion.
Okay, okay. You know what your job is there, then, folks? Great, okay, thank you very much. Are there any citizens that want to speak on a topic other than what we've been talking about today? Okay. Please come forward.
Not others, but mention two. Todd Ashison, 1451 Grim Road, Athens. Myself and John Branner spoke to you last week about the, or last session, about the two developments, Cornerstone and the Lofts, and the plains, Lytec developments that we believe should be considered under the Athens subdivision regulations as they're within the three-mile radius.
Correct.
And I just wanted to point out that we believe there's time criticality involved in moving this topic forward because of the nature of lack of approvals necessary for those developments to actually have bulldozers turn dirt. And we don't have any agreement with the Ohio Housing Finance Agency that we citizens will have any opportunity to comment on the administrative requirements that OFA put on the final funding approval, and that is archaeological surveys and analysis of the bus garage fumes and noise in relation to the cornerstone buildings. So, as it stands now, when those are done, OFA could just check off, and bulldozers can hit, hit, hit the ground running. So, we don't know when that's going to happen. So, that's my comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? No? Okay. So, are there any other announcements or other business? See, there's nobody raising their hand quickly, so with that, then, I guess I will move that this meeting be adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for participation and coming.